Good evening and welcome to the Hopewell Valley League of Women Voters School Board Candidates Forum. My name is Joanne Held and I'm president of our local league. Our league is dedicated to voter education and to increasing voter participation here in the Hopewell Valley. We welcome men and women who live in our community to join in this effort. We're happy to host this opportunity for our school board candidates to discuss with you the many issues facing our school district. We welcome the energy and fresh ideas that these candidates bring to the discussion. As you know, this is the first time in recent history that we are electing school board members in the fall. Also this year, the school budget will not be on the ballot. And tomorrow night, we'll be hosting a forum for municipal candidates. We welcome also members of the public who are here with us tonight, and we invite other members of the community to watch this program when it is rerun on the local public access cable stations. And our moderator will give you that schedule later. You can also get it on our league website. Our moderator tonight is Peg Getz, a member of the Hopewell Valley League of Women Voters. Peg lives in Pennington Borough, which does not have an open seat in this fall's school board election, so she will not be voting for any of these candidates. And now I'd like to turn it over to Peg.
Thank you. Let me start by going over the format of the forum, which was shared in advance with the candidates. And the format will be as follows. Each candidate will be asked a new question from me, to which they have two minutes to respond, followed by 30-second rebuttals from all of the other candidates. These and the other questions that I pose includes one submitted to the league in advance by Hopewell Township and Hopewell Borough residents. After the first three questions, each candidate will have an opportunity to ask a question of one other candidate. The questioner has 30 seconds to pose his question, and the respondent has two minutes to answer. There will be no rebuttals during this round of questioning. I'll start the cross-questioning going from my left to the right, proceeding alphabetically through the Hopewell Borough and then Hopewell Township candidates. After this round of cross-questioning, I'll pose three more questions, followed by a second round of the candidates questioning each other, and I'll go in reverse order for that round of questioning. After three additional questions from me, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. The order of the closing statement will again be in reverse alphabetical order. Do I need to start? Okay. I'd like to introduce the candidates for the school board. Again, from my far right in Hopewell Borough, Gordon Lewis, Mel Myers, and the candidates for Hopewell Township, Bruce Gunther, Michael Markulak, Michael Ruger, and Neil Stefford. The first question, which I'm going to address to Mr. Lewis, is as follows. "The school district must prepare students to compete in the global marketplace. How well does the district currently do this, and in what areas is improvement needed?"
Well, this is something, first of all, that's very important to me because I'm directly involved in global education, and so I'm looking at this from the perspective of analyzing other education systems around the world. And I'd say if you look at us from a global perspective, we're doing a fairly good job. I think that we pay particular attention to core skills. We are working very hard on improving writing, for example, which I think is one of the areas which we identified early on as a place which we could deliver better. I think one thing that the administration does well here is have a vision for what education in the 21st century is all about. And I think that one of the things that we're focusing on here is less information and more skills themselves. So these kind of core skills, critical thinking, creative thinking, problem-solving, all of these kind of elements in our curriculum are getting expressed in terms of not only being able to master the facts, but also in being able to basically perform according to benchmarks, which we're trying to create right now, which are basically what you could call can-do statements, abilities, transferable skills that our students are going to be able to take into that global marketplace, because, as we all know, the jobs that our students are going to be having, they don't even exist today.
Okay. Let me repeat the question then before the other candidates respond. "The school district must prepare students to compete in the global marketplace. How well does the district currently do this, and in what areas is improvement needed?" And let me start with Mr. Myers, and then we'll work our way down the table.
Okay. Well, I'm actually concerned with our students graduating, being able to find jobs, and I lean more towards the practical education field. When I was on the board before, we were very fortunate to be able to save our auto shop, which is hard to find anymore in any high school. And I would emphasize, put some emphasis on practical type of education.
Mr. Gunther.
I think the school district does an excellent job of preparing the students for the work world and for college or any other endeavor that they wish to choose after high school. I've been attending their meetings for the past three, four months, about a half a dozen or more, and I have to tell you that I'm very impressed with the group of people that presently serve on the board and also the superintendent and president of the board. They're doing some incredibly exciting things and initiating new programs for the next year, which I'll get into more talking about later. But I think that the school's doing an adequate job, and I think that they're always looking to continue to improve, and I have every confidence that they will.
Mr. Markulak. Thank you. Yeah, I think the school is doing an excellent job preparing students for both college and opportunities after high school. There are a few areas of improvement that I'd like to see. One is in the idea of staff training, continuing to improve our staff. Better teachers equals better students. I also think we need to leverage best practices across the schools. I know currently they're using a system of cross-pollination between the schools, and I'd like to see that continue. I'd also like to see a focus on extracurricular activities. Having a son going through the recruiting process right now for college, I realize what extracurricular activities in school and out of school mean as part of a college application. Thank you.
Mr. Ruger.
I think the schools are doing an excellent job. And of course, even when you're doing an excellent job, you can always try to do better. I think that the two things that are most important for all the students to really know how to do when they get out of school, first of all, is communicate. I see a lot of recent college graduates, and the ones who really stand out are the ones who are able to vocalize, able to write, able to speak clearly, and able to let people know what their thoughts are. The other thing is that we've got a lot of information out there. Students need to know how to synthesize and how to separate the good from the bad and be able to use that productively and usefully.
Mr. Stefter.
I also think that the district is doing an excellent job, but there are room, there is room for improvement. There's a big focus in future jobs on STEM fields, and I believe the district is trying to move towards that in implementing some more math and science initiatives in the elementary schools. I think that's a good place to start. Not necessarily the technology in all the classrooms, but learning the skills to apply to the kinds of problems that will come up in those jobs.
Thank you. I'm going to direct the second question to Mr. Myers. What is the role of the ideal school board? What should be the relationship of the board with the administration and the public?
Well, the schools are really run day-to-day by the superintendent. And the role of the school board is to oversee the operation of the school board and provide some direction to the superintendent as to, you know, what he should put emphasis upon. Pretty much everything is run by the superintendent for your day-to-day operations.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to start the responses then with Mr. Gunther.
I've been involved in education for 35 years, first 10 years of the first... 35 years, I was a high school English teacher. The last 25 years, I was a school psychologist and administrator. I see a board as, and I've always learned and believed, a board is a policymaking group of people. And their job is to reflect what the community wants and needs and develop policy around those issues. The superintendent is the one who institutes their policies and makes sure that the teachers and staff are doing what the board requests them to do. But the board is essentially a policymaking board, a group of people. They make policy that the school operates by.
Mr. Markulak.
Yes. The board really has three responsibilities, in my mind. First is to provide resources. That's done through taxation. It's done through, you know, long-term planning. Second is to provide strategic direction, both in terms of curriculum and policy. And then finally, they're responsible for the evaluation and the training of the senior staff of the administration.
Mr. Ruger.
I'm on the board of directors of a nonprofit organization, Juvenile Law Center, that works with juvenile offenders. And in working with that, I see the role of the board as providing, like Michael said, guidance, particularly in the financial aspect. The fact is that our schools are a $77 million enterprise. That's a lot of money to be responsible for, and it's the money of the taxpayers until they pay their taxes. So the role, one of the roles of the board is to make sure when that money is spent, that it's spent effectively and usefully.
Mr. Stefter.
I completely agree that the board needs to help the superintendent and the district spend the money wisely. The superintendent is one person, and the board can provide a number of perspectives, especially from different experience levels and backgrounds. They are there to develop the policy and work with the superintendent and oversee the district and make sure the schools are operating, but they are not involved in the day-to-day aspects of the schools.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, well, I think what everybody's saying, everybody has a point in there that is correct and correctly describes what the role of the school board should be. But there is one other element here, and that is challenge. I think that one of our jobs is to really challenge the administration to really perform at their highest level, to be innovative, but to be held accountable at the same time for that.
Thank you. The third question is going to be directed to Mr. Gunther. "The school district administration has stated that a major issue facing the district is the changing student population and declining enrollment. What can the school board do to address these issues?"
Well, I was very excited the other night in attending one of the school board meetings when they started talking about initiative that they are going to start, which has to do with having magnet schools, magnet schools dealing with the STEM program. Most exciting that I thought was a magnet school dealing with theater arts. I happened to attend a play here last year, and I was blown away by the quality of the students' talent. But the magnet schools, I think, is an incredible idea to generate resources for the schools, funds for the schools, and to vary the education of the students. I see that as an extremely exciting thing that's going to be taking place, and I hope to be a part of it.
Mr. Markulak.
Yes. I mean, yeah, I'm excited that the school board and the administration understands the changing demographics and is ahead of addressing this particular problem. As we all know, it's not, it's not one individual school, it's across the entire district. As Mr. Gunther said, you know, the magnet schools will attract some additional folks into the district. I also think community involvement's an important part of this process. And I know the superintendent's letter talked about involving the community as we go forward to help determine what is the correct course of action as we face this challenge of changing enrollment.
Mr. Ruger.
Now, I agree. I think that the letter from the superintendent was great. I do think the community needs to be involved, because the fact is the demographics are changing. Just like the ratables in the valley have gone down, the number of students in the valley have gone down. But what we have to keep in mind is, as we look at all options, that any options that we choose, some are more permanent than others. And we just need to be very careful to recognize that whatever path we go down, it's one that we're going to be following for some years to come.
Thank you. Mr. Stefter.
I'm somewhat concerned about how far the board has already gone in their discussions and decision-making. They're already discussing magnet schools, which has not been announced anywhere, certainly wasn't in the superintendent's letter. And while there's a statement that they're welcoming discussion and parent input, it sounds like discussions have already happened. Another thing I think we need to make sure is part of the discussion is the evidence on school organization and governance, whether there should be K-2 schools, what kind of school should be, how the school should be structured, their size, and their grades, and so on. And there is research evidence that would help guide those decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
Right. Well, I think that, as people are saying, that the administration is taking a measured approach. It's inclusive. The administration is trying to include the public in this discussion, and nobody is making rash decisions. Personally, I just want to point out here that I think our individual schools in our towns are extremely important, and I personally will be very strongly supportive of maintaining all of the schools in the district as they are.
Thank you. Mr. Myers.
Yes, thank you. Actually, I submitted an article that should appear tomorrow in the Hopewell Valley News. Again, I am opposed to closing of any of our four elementary schools. Back in the year 2000, I worked with a committee for a full year to study the same problem, except it was in the other direction. Too many students, and the schools were operating at 150% of capacity. And I'm happy to say, as a result of that committee's work, the Sunnybrook Elementary School came online. So I would hate to see it go back in the wrong direction.
Thank you. We're going to switch now to the cross-questioning. Excuse me. And here I'm going to start with Mr. Lewis, and please direct your question to one other candidate, and then each of the other candidates will do the same.
Yeah, I guess, and I think, was it Mr. Stefter? I may be wrong here, but it was about staff training and development. And one of the things that we are moving forward on here in the district are communities of practice, which I guess is related to the notion of cross-pollinization. And so I'd just like to get your impression on what you feel about communities of practice as a way to foster professional development.
That actually wasn't me, but I can try to answer that question.
Who would be interested in asking that?
I think that was me.
Yeah.
Okay, then go for it. Sorry. I'm going to redirect.
I'm more than willing to take it. Yeah, you know, communities of practice, or learning communities of practice are already in place, and, you know, science teachers getting together across schools, you know, teachers sharing best practices. I think that notion needs to continue. As I said, as we were talking about areas of improvement, I think continuing to improve how our teachers do their jobs, providing them additional tools. I know they have tools that allow them now to test the students and not wait for state standardized testing, so that they get back immediate results and can implement those results quickly in the classroom. I think we need to continue to teach our teachers on technology and keep them up to speed. I don't think technology is the answer to all problems, but I certainly do believe that we're facing a world where technology plays a very important role. I submitted a letter to the Hopewell Valley News last week talking about STEM. If you look at higher education, if you look at where the job growth is in America today, it's in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and medicine. And I think we need to continue to do a better job of preparing our students to face those challenges when they get to the next level. Those skills that they need to learn are problem-solving, communications, right? The ability to do technical analysis, the ability to have process in how they think. And I think we accomplish that by training our teachers as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers, address the question to one other candidate.
Maybe Mr. Mark, let him talk a little bit about teachers. What are your feelings about the teacher evaluation process?
Yeah, I believe the district has implemented a new evaluation process for teachers that gives them direct feedback. Some of it is based upon the state standardized testing, some of it is based upon performance review of how they do their job, and I think that's important. While we're not at a point where we're talking about merit-based salaries, we are, and I believe the district is, taking steps to move in a direction that gives teachers positive feedback, that allows them to continue to grow in their career that they've chosen. So I think some basic steps have already been taken. Again, I think we need to continue that through education of the teachers and through community involvement. And to be quite honest, you know, I was a little late walking in this evening. One of the things we were doing this evening was sitting down with my son, looking through infant and campus, and making sure that homework assignments are turned in, and, you know, looking at how grading is going in his particular classes, talking about the potential need for, you know, possibly a tutor in one class. Those are important tools that we have. I think we need to educate the community. I think we need to educate the teachers. And as I said, better teachers equals better students.
Thank you. Mr. Gunther, question to another candidate.
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I'm wondering why Mr. Sevler would think that the board is making decisions in secret or not making the community aware of what they're doing when the superintendent sent out, in terms of the declining enrollment, the superintendent sent out a note to all of the parents involved that they're going to start a two-year plan, looking at it, and to come up with some suggestions. And the suggestion about magnet schools was made in a board meeting that's public. Maybe you should have attended some of them, because there's information out there, it's being presented. And I don't, I did not, I don't see this board doing anything that would suggest sneaky or behind-the-scenes or not appropriate or not above board. I see them being very upfront about every intention that they're doing and involving the community.
You're putting words into my mouth. I never said they were operating in secret or sneakily. I just said I was concerned that they've already had some preliminary discussions and talked about some options, and those options were not laid out in the superintendent's email. He said that, yes, there will be discussions, and there are ongoing discussions and options that will come up. He didn't list any particular options. That's why I mentioned that I was surprised that they'd already discussed some of them. I think it's perfectly within their right to discuss them. I'm glad the superintendent sent out that email and invited input. I'm concerned that this is another situation in which the board and the superintendent have already made some decisions, and rather than having open discussions, they're setting up forums to tell the public of their decisions. That happened several years ago with the strings and the busing, and I'm concerned that that's a pattern that might happen again. I'm very happy if they are open discussions and the superintendent is open to suggestions.
Thank you. Mr. Markulak. Your turn.
I guess I'll be the next one to pile on, so, for Mr. Stefter. First of all, thank you for coming out and supporting the lower speed limits in front of Bear Tavern Elementary. As someone who has worked on this issue for several years, including getting the speed limit reduced in 2012 from 35 to 30 miles per hour, what would you do as a school board member to adjust safety in front of all of our schools? We had a student hit between the high school and middle school several years ago, and it's an issue not just at Bear Tavern, but in front of all of our schools.
And I understand and I appreciate your efforts to getting the Bear Tavern speed limit reduced. And I understand that the board has limited abilities to influence those decisions, and I appreciate their work with the township committee to try to get the county or someone to do the right thing. In terms of improving student safety, I think we need more people involved at the perimeter of schools. I've noticed that there are no safety patrols, either students or adults, who are watching out for students who are going towards the road or away from areas that they're supposed to. Where I grew up, safeties monitored the crosswalks, and they monitor the exits and buses and so on. So I think that's an opportunity to get students involved in the safety measures. We can also hire other people to patrol those areas. I know that is a cost, but it is an efficient use of resources when safety is concerned. We should also look into the particular crossing patterns that are going on between the middle and high school and see if there's a better way to get students between them. Where I grew up, there was a middle school right next to the high school, and we had students going back and forth between classes. And certain routes were established, and people were lined those routes to make sure that they were followed.
Thank you. Mr. Ruger.
This is going to be a question for Mr. Gunther, and I think that it's symbolized by the conversation that you were having with Mr. Stefter. We all know that a lot of members of the public don't pay a lot of attention to what the school board does. Attendance at board meetings is low. My guess is few people watch them on television. What would you do to try to increase civic participation, involvement, and activity within the board and board decision-making?
One of the things I thought about is, instead of holding school board meetings at the administration building, is to hold them in the schools and announce that they're going to be held such-and-such a date in this particular school or that particular school. It gives the parents of that area, that demographic area, an opportunity to come out and let the board know and talk about what's going on in their school. Another thing besides the TVs, which I think are a great idea, but I don't think you get it as much when you're present as you do watching it on TV. But increasing communication, you know, there was discussion about the board and one of the board's committees, is communication, about how to increase communication. But I think a big one is to bring the board to the communities that they serve, to have the boards come into the schools. They need to see the schools, they need to see the parents that, whose children populate those schools, and the parents need to have an opportunity to do a face-to-face with the board.
Thank you. And Mr. Stefter, your turn.
Mr. Gunther, a question for you. What consideration toward the effect on the schools did you place in your agreement to work with Cooltronic and build the 300 additional residences?
In my agreement?
The one that you voted for on the planning board.
I voted for a affordable housing plan. I'm not sure, your question again, phrase it again?
The agreement that you voted for was to work with Cooltronic to develop several hundred units, and I was wondering if you considered the effect on the schools?
Yes. The issue we're talking about now is declining enrollment in the schools. If you're talking about a modest development, and it's also meeting state mandates for affordable housing, that was more an issue of affordable housing. It's going to generate, the estimates that they were talking about generating would not have any impact on the school other than helping out with the decreasing enrollment of students. And I think that's, any ways we can get students, rather than making drastic changes, as Mr. Myers was talking about, are helpful. I think we need to look into picking up more students. That's a, it's happening all across the country, declining enrollment. And I didn't have that agreement. That was an agreement between the planning board and, well, they really, yeah, the planning board was working with Cooltronics, but there was, nothing came of it, you know? was working with Cooltronics, but there was, nothing came of it, you know? Nothing happened. But yes, I was in support of it because I thought it was an ideal affordable housing plan.
Okay, thank you. We're going to return to the general questions now. Question number four, which I'm going to direct to Mr. Markulak. Excuse me. In addition to serving on the board as a whole, board members also serve on committees. Which committee do you believe you could contribute most to and why?
Yeah, there's actually two, but I'll pick the one that is nearest and dearest to me. That's financing facilities. As Mr. Ruger said, you know, our schools are a $77 million annual operation. We have many union contracts, we have long-term maintenance of buildings, we have busing. So we face a tremendous set of challenges. Seventy-five, almost 75% of the cost of the schools are fixed through, you know, staff and through buildings and grounds maintenance. So there's very little discretion in the overall budget. Now, saying that, there's certainly some things we can explore. One that I've done while I was working on the township committee has been shared services. I think we need to continue to look at shared services, not just with other municipalities, but with, you know, the greater community, the local community colleges, the colleges in the area, other municipalities, so that we can, you know, start to drive down costs through shared services. I know there's several initiatives currently ongoing with the Hopewell Township to move the buses maybe over to our maintenance facility and share a maintenance facility or share building space. So I think shared services are one of the areas we definitely need to look at. One of the other things we need to look at and make sure that we're doing is having appropriate staffing levels. I think the current administration, current school board, has done an excellent job, but we need to continue to monitor that and make sure that we're providing high-quality education at an affordable price. We do have many members of the valley who are on fixed incomes, and we need to take them into consideration as we move forward. Finally, one of the things I'd like to do is help bring seniors. It's an idea that Mr. Gunther and I have talked about, bringing senior involvement in. As I said, there are a large majority of Hopewell Township that is paying taxes, that no longer has children in the school, but I'd like to find a way to involve them, involve them in the process, and let them realize what a strong education system does for home value and does to keep down overall municipal costs.
Thank you. Mr. Ruger?
I wish you had gone with your second choice because you took my choice. I think that finance is certainly paramount. It is incredibly important that we make sure that every dollar is spent properly. You know, as you so nicely put it, there are so many fixed costs, but there are things that we still have to look at, and we need to make sure when we look at those that we're being fiscally strategic. It's hard to make sure that every dollar is being spent in the best way, and it's really hard to make any kind of cuts because when you make a cut, somebody is not happy with the result. And unfortunately, sometimes those decisions have to be made. And I think that it's the folks who are focusing on the finance who are best equipped to make those hard decisions.
Mr. Sefter?
I would say the curriculum committee. I've spent the past dozen years doing education research on math curriculum and other curriculum in schools, and I've evaluated dozens of other education programs to see whether they're effective in schools from K through 12. So I think I could provide a lot of insight in curricular decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Well, I'm currently serving on the education committee and the communications committee, and right now, obviously, one of the areas that I have particular strength on is education. I manage a group, a language policy for a group of 70 universities in 36 countries with 250,000 students, curriculum design, technology integration, and also the operating budget. So the other area would be also, obviously, finances where I could contribute. So financial acumen and academic prowess, those are the two things that I bring together on the board.
Mr. Myers?
Yes, well, I've actually had the good fortune of serving on all five committees: educational program, finance facilities, communications, personnel, and policy. The hardest-working committee and the most important clearly is the educational program. I still call it curriculum committee. But I do have a concern about the finance and facilities committee, and I submit that all school board members and the school board's finance committee in particular need to greatly increase their oversight of the budget preparation process, especially now that the voters have no say in the budget as long as it stays within the 2%, with certain exceptions called banking. That's why we're up to, I believe, 2.7% increase this year. I don't think the finance and facilities committee meets long enough. Their meetings usually last probably no more than 30 minutes a month, and I think they need to greatly increase their oversight of the financial operation.
Thank you, Mr. Gunther.
I would like to be involved in the finance also because I have a history of that and doing well in it, but I'll not speak to that. I'll speak to the committees I actually have the most interest in, in its policy and personnel. Policy because, again, that's what a board is about. They set policy, and I think it's very, very important that the correct policies be set because it drives everything else in the district. It drives their finances, it drives their curriculum, it drives everything. Personnel, I think if you don't have a good staff in terms of abilities and a happy staff in terms of feeling they are supported, you're not going to get a good district. And I think by and large, you have a very good professional staff here, and I think you have a satisfied staff. I've never had a negative contact with a teacher about my son.
Okay, thank you. The next question is directed at Mr. Ruger. What do you think is the appropriate role of extracurricular activities in public education today?
I think extracurricular activities are extremely important for a number of reasons. First of all, when you look at sports, more and more kid, I know that when I was in high school, there were not the number of kids who were involved in sports that there are today. I think sports are great as a way of developing the concepts of teamwork, hard work, stick-to-it-iveness. You show up at a certain time, you participate, you learn rules, you learn how to act as a group. Those are skills that in the real world, sadly, are sadly lacking. There's a lot of people out there that don't understand what it is to be on a team, what it is to show up on time, and those are skills particularly when a student first enters the workforce that are really important. But we also can't forget the other extracurricular activities. A lot of times, school is where kids are exposed to things that they aren't exposed to at home, you know, be it music, art, movies, all kinds of things like that. I mean, I look at some of the things in the high school, like with the TV class. I think it's absolutely great that kids in the high school are able to have the chance to work with real equipment, just like our student volunteers are doing this evening. And we have to keep those extracurricular activities going because we need to provide those opportunities. They're the things that fuel the kids' dreams, they're the things that keep the kids' interests, they're the things that keep them busy. And we all know, anybody who has children know, the more that we keep them interested and the more that we keep them busy, the happier they are and frankly, the happier parents are as well. Now, we also know that these things cost money, and it's a sad fact. So we need to figure out these extracurricular activities, you know, how do we balance them? Which are the ones that serve the needs that aren't served? Which are the ones that really help the kids? Which are the ones that help our community, you know, in some extent? Which are the ones that entertain our community? Which are the ones that are going to help to build those skills that kids will need? And where are the ones that they're not going to be able to find somewhere else if they're not offered in the school?
Thank you. Mr. Sefter?
I agree that extracurricular activities provide the opportunity for life skills that are not necessarily learned in the classroom or elsewhere. I also think that it allows students to demonstrate a range of interests and abilities, and also the depth of which they get into the extracurriculars has been shown to be valued by colleges. However, I don't think they should crowd out the academics. I think the primary objective of the school should be core academics and to provide a quality education. So I do believe that while it is a balancing act, we need to make sure that the academics are not hurt with the opportunities of all of these extracurricular activities.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I think one thing about extracurriculars, it's really a place for a student to shine and a student who may not shine in a more conventional sense. So things like the Model United Nation, the robotics club, and of course, all the sports themselves are just important to have a more well-rounded education, to understand that that education goes beyond the classroom and can capture different talents that we may not see in our day-to-day school life.
Mr. Myers?
Yes, I'm pleased that our students are taking advantage of our extracurricular activities. I think the percentage, the last I remember, is something like 60% of our students are involved in extracurricular activities. I'm happy that we were able to change our schedule at the Central High School from a locked schedule to a rotating drop schedule because this allowed most of our students to participate in extracurricular activities and sports without missing classes. It used to be always the eighth class of the day and they would miss that subject, but now they can, with a rotating schedule, they don't miss their academics as much.
Mr. Gunther?
This is a very personal statement and an experience. My son, as a freshman, received an academic scholarship to attend Petty School. During the spring break from there, he and I went out to the Grand Canyons, and he turned to me one time and he says, I asked him if he was anxious to go back to school, and he said, "No, I'm not." And I was really shocked because he said he really loved the education that he was getting at Petty. He was being academically and intellectually challenged. And I said, "Why?" And being a day student, he was going to school six days a week, all hours. What happened, what he was missing was extracurricular activities. My wife and I sat down and talked about it, and we said, "Okay, let's look into him coming back into the district." He's presently taking five AP courses, he's in the Model UN, he's went to Kenya, he's working on his Eagle Scouts rank, he's World Health Organization, and a number of other activities. And it is, you know, I think that they are a crucial part of any educational program.
Mr. Markulak?
Yeah, I actually have a unique experience right now because I have a son who's going through college applications, one of which is West Point. And West Point is a very, you know, analytical, quantitative kind of process. They're looking at 60% of their scoring is based upon academics. 30% is based upon extracurricular activities. And it's not just in school, but it's also in the community. You know, it's have you served as a volunteer? Are you involved with coaching? Have you attended boys' state? So I think the school does an excellent job of providing extracurricular activities. I'd also like to see the community brought in more, you know, through our guidance counselors to give kids opportunities beyond that.
Okay. Thank you. The next question goes to Mr. Sefter. Last year, it was revealed that the progress in the four elementary schools in the district was not consistent based on test scores. What are your thoughts for how the district can address the inconsistencies and improve performance across the schools?
So I think there are a number of factors that led to the differences across the schools. Some of them are in the district's control and some of them are not. To the extent that the district can affect some of them, that is the allocation of resources across schools. They need to make sure that the same amount of resources per student, the same quality of offerings is consistent across schools so that everyone has the same opportunity. On the other hand, providing equal opportunity does not guarantee equality of results, and there may be other factors that are leading to differences across the schools. There are different demographics, there are different mindsets for the parents in each of the different schools, and that can lead to differences that are not necessarily problematic. So I believe the district is moving in the right direction in trying to make sure the resources are equivalent across schools. They should get more information after this next year when the new teacher evaluation system is in place. We should get more quantitative measures of teacher quality, and we can see whether there are systematic differences in the teaching quality across schools.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with much of what was just said. I think that the process, we are making progress in the process. We've seen this, and we'll continue to make progress in the coming year. Some of the things that we have to look at are defining school goals, which we've been successfully doing over the last few years, making sure that we're taking into account the differences that Mr. Sefter just mentioned, continuing professional development that does not always show itself as obviously as other initiatives might take, and of course, benchmarking, which we're doing within the district, not just measuring ourselves against the state standards, but measuring ourselves against the standards that we set for ourselves as a district.
Mr. Myers?
I would agree with much of what has already been said. This is a problem, and I know that our superintendent, Dr. Smith, this was one of the very first things he identified when he came on board. And he's obviously having a lot of trouble getting the matter straightened out, so he's a lot smarter than I am, so I don't know what additional suggestions I would be able to offer him.
Mr. Gunther?
It's my understanding that the district is making progress to equalize the expectations and performance of all the schools. But one of the things that I've heard talked about recently also was teachers being able to, teachers that are having success in certain areas, being able to share how they were successful with other teachers in in-service programs so that there's a great deal more cross-communication amongst the staff and amongst the schools about how they attack and deal with certain problems. And with the evaluation system that's in place, you're going to be able to identify areas of weakness, and then you're going to be able to identify areas where teachers are excelling in, then have that teacher that's excelling work with the teacher that's maybe having a problem in dealing with a particular matter. It needs to be communicated amongst the teachers.
Mr. Markulak?
Yes, you know, standardized testing is a tool. The current system is NJASK. There's a new system coming into place called PARK over the next couple of years. I believe the school district's already gotten ahead of, you know, that new test and how that test is going to be administered. I'd also, the tool I talked about earlier is called Performance Matters. It really gives the teacher the ability to test students on a regular basis, test after each section of learning, and go back and make corrections as necessary. So I think implementation of tools like that will give our teachers the ability to educate our students. And again, standardized testing is a tool. It's not the end-all, be-all, and as most reports have shown, all of the kids by the time they're in seventh and eighth grade are at the same level.
Mr. Ruger?
Well, one of the things about going last is there's not really much I can add. I think that it's been said very well by folks, but the thing that I would emphasize is the way that I tackle all issues when they're put in front of me. The first thing I do is I look at the data. I look at the facts in front and see what is it that we know and more importantly, what is it we don't know? Figure out can we get that other information and use that as a basis to move forward to make the decisions.
Okay, thank you. We're going to now do the second round of cross-questioning, and this time I'm going to start with Mr. Sefter and then work down the table the other way.
Thank you. Mr. Gunther, in your letter to the Hopewell Valley News, you suggested that the implementation of the new evaluation system may prove far more challenging than expected and that your background will provide useful insight. So I'm curious how specifically your background is going to help in the Danielson observations and the value-added test measures?
Well, besides being a school psychologist, which my job was to evaluate programs, effectiveness of teachers meeting, the goals and objectives of programs, I was also an administrator in my previous job. I dealt with a $70 million budget, a staff of 120 people. I had administrators under me that evaluated staff. So I think I have a real strong background in education and knowing what evaluations are, how to use them, and how to use them as a motivational tool besides identifying problems, how to help. I think Hopewell, many years ago, I always held that Hopewell had an outstanding evaluation systems. A friend of mine was a teacher here, and he was talking about being evaluated five times a year, and I couldn't believe that. I thought that was like really excessive, a tenured teacher. And he said, "No," because he was evaluated by the superintendent on down, and he looked forward to them because the evaluations were helps. That was why he got extra materials, he got ideas on how to do things, and he looked forward to them. And that was the background that I came from when evaluating staff. And, you know, this whole new evaluation process is going to be- you know, this whole new evaluation process is going to be, it's intense. And I think I have an experience in terms of working in school districts.
Thank you. Mr. Ruger?
My question is for Mr. Markulak. More than when I've talked to people over the past few weeks, more than one person has said, "Why is, why does Michael, why does he want to move from the, from the board, from one board to the other? Why does he want to leave the Township Committee and go to the School Board?"
If, you know, some folks in the community know me, my passion has always been around helping young adults, children, you know, improve what they do. I gotta be honest, I got involved with the Township Committee really because of finances, you know, wanted to understand where my tax dollars were going, wanted to understand, you know, more of the inner workings of our community. And it's been a tremendous experience for me. I've learned about everything from municipal land, municipal land law to wastewater management to affordable housing. And I think it's been a tremendous opportunity. But the real successes I had, even when I was on the Township Committee, have been around helping kids. You know, we've got a, now a teen center, a youth activity center, partnership with the Y, partnership with the Youth Advisory Board to bring that together. You know, we've got a robust athletic program. I participated as coach in probably every sport that's out there. So I have a passion for it. I have a strong background in finance. And I have a strong background in education. I worked on a task force that Governor Corzine put together to really focus on community colleges and the needs, you know, really STEM-based, though nobody was talking STEM at the time, STEM-based programming for the community colleges so that we were training our young men and women to enter the workforce. So for those, and you know, just the enjoyment of being involved and serving my community, that's why I've decided to run.
Thank you. And Mr. Markulak, it's your turn to ask a question.
I'll do Mr. Ruger the favor of giving him a question back. As I'm sure you're aware, the three municipalities pay an unequal per-student tax rate. As a township resident and a School Board member, what would you do to remedy this discrepancy?
That is a very tough question, which is probably why you asked me. You know, I think that when you look at how the rates are divided, how these decisions are made, there are so many factors that go into it. I mean, we do have an unequal population. We have an unequal number of houses. We have an unequal tax base. There's got to be some way to try to equalize it. And it would be great to bring it more into conformity. And do I have a specific idea on how to do that? I have to be honest, no. But is it something that should be looked at and should be worked with? Yes, because in the end, it would be the fairest approach.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gunther?
Consolidation comes to mind. I think it is something that needs to be examined. I understand that people from the town--
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's your turn to ask a question.
Oh.
For you to ask a question of another person.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Myers, why is he coming or wanting to be on the board? What is your reasoning?
No, thank you. My main reason, it might be personal, but I enjoy being able to do something that is important and helpful to the community. And it gives me a lot of satisfaction to be able to help out. And that's basically what motivates me to apply for a position on the School Board.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Myers, it's your turn to ask a question of another candidate.
I'm going to ask a question of Mr. Lewis. In talking to the community, they seem to be pretty well-divided on the issue that came up about the breathalyzer testing at the prom. What are your feelings about breathalyzer testing?
Well, I was not in favor of breathalyzer testing. My personal opinion on this was that this was something that infringed on a right that I felt students have to be considered innocent before being looked at as guilty. Now, on the other hand, one of the things that you have to do when you're on a School Board is that you have to compromise on certain things. And although I did hold that position and I continue to feel that way, I listened to what the school administration had to say. I listened especially to Mr. Dare, the high school principal, and I said, "Okay, you know, the board feels this way, you feel this way, then, you know, I'm not going to bar, I'm not going to belabor this point." We allowed it to go into effect. And it seems at this point that it's working and it hasn't been detrimental. So I'm encouraged by that. And although, you know, my personal opinion remains the same, I think as a policy, it seems to be working and that makes me feel good.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Lewis, you can ask the final question of another candidate.
Okay, well, I'll ask one to Mel because we at Hopewell, we're not getting a heck of a lot of questions compared to the other guys. Mel, you wrote last week in the Hopewell Valley News an article about the new fields that we've created here. And you voiced your concern, if I understand correctly, that the community should not be using those fields. And that left me rather perplexed because I felt that we choose to be inclusive here in Hopewell Valley rather than blocking people out. Maybe I'm wrong, but could you explain your points in that letter?
Yeah, no, I did not intend to say, and I hope you didn't interpret it that way. Actually, I think it's great that the community can use our fields. What I was trying to say was that if the fields are used for a non-school purpose, then whoever's using them should help offset the expense of using those facilities. And that's pretty much what I thought, at least. If you didn't get that, I'm sorry.
Okay. Returning to the general questions, this will be addressed to Mr. Lewis. As our school population and educational needs change, it may be prudent to rethink the way that we use our buildings. Do you have any recommendations for consolidating or repurposing space in our buildings?
That is a very difficult question because we're only at the very beginning of the journey to find out what to do there. We have some data about where the demographics are going. And I think as we heard earlier, we're also engaging the community in trying to understand what this means. But just one example here that might serve as an indicator of what we can do is what Mr. Gunther was talking about magnet schools or academies, the ability to take schools, for instance, in this circumstances right now, Bear Tavern, and to add academy classes in there in order to maximize the use of space in a school, which would otherwise be losing its population. So there's one way of looking at it. What I think is very important here, and especially coming from Hopewell Borough, is that we understand the uniqueness of our walking to schools and that we preserve that. I think that that is one of the prime values that we have in this district. So anything that we do needs to be predicated on the fact of preserving these schools that we have in the, in the way that they are right now. So we'll be looking at that over the next period of time and trying to understand it. But rather than making a, you know, a pronouncement at this point in time, I think, I think as somebody else said, looking at the data, I think that's the next step we have to do.
Okay, thank you. And opportunity for the other candidates to respond to the question, starting with Mr. Myers.
Yes, well, interestingly, about six years ago, when Judy Ferguson was our interim superintendent, she was strongly in favor of abandoning our administration building in Pennington and moving all the administrative activities to the Bear Tavern School. At the time, I did not favor that because I thought the administration building is kind of central to the residents of the valley. But if in fact, the Bear Tavern School has room, I would be willing to reconsider the possibility of doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Gunther?
I'd like to see the schools being used for more than athletic events in the evening. Why not have a more robust community education program going on where the citizens can come in and take classes? We have some really talented people and knowledgeable people in this town. And I know, I go up to Princeton Adult School quite often and take courses up there. And they have an incredibly robust program where all of their schools are used for a lot of varied programs. And I think that's a way that, something that we should be looking at to make more effective use of our buildings.
Mr. Markulak?
Yeah, I think the key points have been hit on. You know, we need to, we need to utilize the space that we have most efficiently. And if that means moving folks out of the administration building to a, to a school, I think that's helpful. I also think that it helps to have the administration folks down there. I talked earlier about shared services between the Township, between the other municipalities and the schools. And I think there's opportunities there. And I think there's opportunities, as Mr. Gunther said, to look at how we're using our schools beyond the, you know, the 8 to 3:30 kind of day.
Thank you. Mr. Ruger?
I think that whatever decisions are made as for using the space in the school, there are two things that are paramount. One is to make sure that security is preserved at all times. We're all concerned about school security and of course, nobody would ever willingly do anything that would jeopardize that, but it is a factor we need to keep in mind. And the other is that whatever we do, you know, I would like to see it done on a trial basis. Because as I said earlier, these decisions can be permanent, or at least very, very long-term. Once you start doing things, it's very difficult to undo them. So one of the approaches that might be interesting is that if we can do something, like for instance, moving administration offices, is it possible to do it on a trial, see if it works, and if that's the best use of the space?
Thank you. Mrs. Sefter?
I'm a little confused about the perceived extra space of Bear Tavern. It seems that Bear Tavern was, had a lower population for a while and then expanded and then grew a lot of trailers outside. And right now, all the classrooms are pretty full and I would be surprised if the administration would want to move into the trailers permanently. I'm less concerned about maximizing the use of school space relative to how to organize classrooms, making sure the class sizes stay appropriate, making sure that enough, we have enough population in an area to provide the right level of offerings. I think those are important issues, much less than making sure trailers are utilized.
Thank you. Okay, the next question I'm going to address to Mr. Myers. Hopewell Valley is blessed with a very active and educated citizenry. How should we use experts in the valley to reduce costs and improve the effectiveness of our school district?
Well, I believe the schools already make great efforts to tap the talent that is in our communities. I guess we could increase the effort somewhat to do that. Maybe we can also get more assistance from some of the corporations and all that are in the valley. And beyond that, I don't have any other ideas immediately.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gunther?
I'm constantly amazed by the varied skills and knowledge and careers and that the people of this valley have and the level of education. And I think that they're not being tapped. I don't think it's being used adequately. I think that they can be used a great deal more adequately by, again, having a School Board or the schools reaching out to these people and having them included in various committees and decision-making, that their skill sets are experts in. I think we have a very educated community and a community that can be a great deal more involved in helping us run the district.
Mr. Markulak?
Yeah, one idea that's worth exploring and considering is the model that the Township Committee has right now. They have volunteer organizations that serve on recreation advisory boards. There's a youth advisory board. There's an open space advisory board. These are volunteers. These are experts in their particular fields who come in and volunteer their time to help advise the Township Committee to make proper decisions. I think that can be extended into the School Board, some of the existing committees that they already have, and some potentially new committees, so that we can tap into those resources to help advise the School Board on making proper decisions.
Mr. Ruger?
I think that as far as involvement with the school district, what I'd like to do is suggest that it starts with the parents of the kids. And I think what we should do is look at an approach where we ask one child, one family, one hour, one year. We ask the families of everybody who has a child in school to donate exactly one hour of time to the school to do something. With 3,740 kids in the school, that's 3,740 volunteer hours that could be used for all kinds of things. That's roughly 15 months of eight-hour days. That's a lot of time. That's a lot of power that can be harnessed from the community.
Mr. Sefter?
I think some of the outreaches going on now with, such as the Hopewell Program and Room Parents, but I do think the community doesn't feel connected and engaged to the schools. I've been to the PTO meetings at all of the schools this month and the largest one of those was 19. There's very few, and no teachers at any of them. So there seems to be a disconnect between the community and the members of the school. It would be, I think many of the parents here believe that there's a lot of resources in the school. They pay a lot of taxes and that they're not needed or required. And so they don't make the effort. And the lack of connection doesn't encourage it.
And Mr. Lewis?
It's interesting because I get an opposite impression in terms of community here. And, you know, traveling around the world, looking at other school systems and even here within the United States, I'm quite amazed at the level of community that we actually have and the engagement that the parents bring. I like what Mr. Gunther's saying about, you know, utilizing our expertise here in the district, for instance, in an adult education program, thinks it's really interesting and worth talking about. The only thing I would add just right here is to make the distinction between using experts to come in as an enhancement and enrichment to our programs and the core teaching challenges that we have within our, within our teaching staff. Let's not mix those two together.
Thank you. And the final question I'm going to direct to Mr. Gunther. A board consists of individuals but acts as a group. How would you, as an individual, work to achieve consensus with your fellow board members?
One of the reasons that I attended these meetings, board meetings since June, was to get a sense of the board because I knew that if it was a dysfunctional group, I'm not going to be successful in being a part of it. And I don't really want to spend my time. And that's why I did that. And I saw a very, very closely operating and cooperating board. And I gotta add that it was an exciting board because I saw people disagree. I saw people suggest new ideas. And I didn't see a situation where others were jumping on them. And I admired that because I think any board needs to have divergent thinking. That's the purpose of the board is to bring together people with divergent ideas so that they come up with new ideas. I don't see that as all, as being a problem with this board. This board I see as being very cooperative and coming, like I said, coming together from divergent point of views to come up with a new and unique solution, perhaps. All the boards, I've been on many homeowner boards, usually as president, and I've always encouraged the other homeowners not to have fear of saying something that I or somebody else may not agree with. That that's, that's the purpose of the board is to discuss, you know. And I don't see, I don't see that happening. I don't envision it happening with the people. If it did happen, I'm a trained mediator, certified and trained.
Mr. Markulak?
Yes. Six years on the Township Committee, serving on several nonprofit boards and serving on a corporate board. One thing I always talk about is principled, honest debate. If we can have principled, honest debate, we'll reach consensus. And sometimes consensus is not unanimous. There's many times that I've been on the losing end of arguments. I've argued my points. I've argued the merits of my points. But I accept the fact that my, my point of view is not everybody's point of view. And I'm willing to work with my colleagues on any board commission that I serve on to reach the best outcome. And I think through principled, honest debate, you do reach the best outcome.
Mr. Ruger?
I think the most important thing is to listen. Too many of us, we hear, but we don't really listen to what other people say. It's very easy to sit there, take the information passively. But when you actually listen to what people say, sometimes you're challenging your own ideas, your own thoughts, your own preconceived notions. And when you start to see what the other person's point of view is and understand the other person's point of view-- the other person's point of view, it's natural that you start to come to consensus. People are always going to disagree, they don't have to be disagreeable doing it, but when you have that skill of being able to listen to what people are doing and saying, I think you get to a better result.
Mr. Sefter?
That's true, although there is some evidence that shows that when faced with the facts, people become more intransigent in their own opinion. So, I think it's just important for people to come to each of the debate with an open mind. It's great for them to have their own opinion, and hopefully, they have support for it. But an open discussion, as Mr. Merkulek said, will lead to some decision. It may not be a unanimous decision. Smart people can disagree, but decisions need to be made and not abdicated.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, I agree with pretty much what everybody's saying. I just want to point out that it's been a process, you know? It's not been all, you know, everybody getting together and singing kumbaya from day one. It's taken time to develop the trust and the relationships which we have right now. And at this point in time, everybody respects each other. We are willing to go to bat and have very hard discussions, as we said, but we do know how to compromise, and we do know how to put the issue in front. So, it's a good climate right now, and one which I wouldn't want to see changed, to be quite honest.
And, Mr. Myers?
Yes, I think there's a need for some more discussion at board meetings. Right now, it seems like whatever a particular committee recommends, everybody's expected to go along with that. And I think we've got to provide more opportunity for dissension, particularly people who may not have been a member of that committee and participated in whatever the particular recommendation was.
Okay, thank you. And we are going to end with our closing statements of one minute per candidate, and I'm going to start with Mr. Sefter.
Oh, thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. School districts will always face challenges, both expected and unexpected. And while I will gladly give my opinion on any current topic, it's just as important that I have a framework for addressing future problems. I've conducted education research, evaluated hundreds of studies on dozens of education programs, and I know how to use research evidence to inform decisions. I'm not a politician. I'm seeking a seat on the school board to act based on what I believe to be the right approach and the best interests of their children. I went into policy research because I wanted to improve education, and the real changes that can be made, and the most important ones to me, are local. I can't give you any proof that my decisions will lead to the best possible schools, or even that you'll agree with all of my views. All I can do is tell you my approach, and if it seems reasonable, I hope you'll consider supporting me. Thank you.
Mr. Ruger?
I too want to thank the League for putting this on. Those of you who are here tonight, anybody who's watching. Also, I want to thank my wife, Tracy Vogler, my mother, who's going to be a township resident next month, unfortunately, too late to vote, and my kids, Teddy, Billy, and Bobby, for putting up with me for the past couple of weeks while I've been going on this adventure. But I also like to thank the fellow candidates. I think it's great that in Hopewell Township, that there are four people going after two seats. You've heard us all talk tonight, and I think what would be good now is for me to say that there are two things that I think that I bring. One is independence. I come to the board with no preconceived notions. I want to learn, I want to listen, and I want to do the right thing for everybody's interests. The other thing that I bring is a willingness, as I said earlier, to listen. My lawyer to the Hopewell Valley News, I invited you all to visit my Facebook page, to send me emails at michaelruger@comcast.net. You'll see that on my yard signs as well. I want to hear what you have to say. I want to know what your views are. I want to be able to take your views to the board and represent you on the board. I don't have all the answers, so I'm going to need your help during this process.
Okay, Mr. Merkulek?
Great, thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the folks in the audience this evening, the students who volunteered their time. I also want to thank all of our teachers and the school administration, because I do believe that this is an excellent school district. I come to this with a passion for helping develop young men and women. You can call it coaching, you can call it scouting, you can call it, you know, a variety of things. But, you know, this is what I enjoy to do. I also come with a long background of public service. You know, I believe in my community, I want to improve my community, and I want to continue to work in my community. I also bring to this, you know, a financial background, a background in education through the Governor Corzine's Task Force that I talked about. So, there's many things that I bring to the table. What I'm asking for is your vote in November. Let me come to the school board, let me listen, and let me do my job. Thank you.
Mr. Gunther?
I'd like to thank everybody for putting this on, and all the teachers, students, moderators and such, as everyone else is. I'm a senior citizen, I've retired in '05. I've lived in this town for 19 years. During that time, I've been involved in a great deal of community service. And I've worked in education for 35 years, 25 of those as a school psychologist, where I evaluated programs. And I have a son who is attending the high school as a senior, he's going to be graduating soon, going on to college. And when I heard that there was an opening on the school board, I said, "That'd be interesting." And I started to check it out. And the more I checked it out, the more I realized that the school board has some incredible challenges ahead of it with declining enrollment, and also some incredible, exciting things happening within the district. And then I said to myself, "I'd like to be a part of that, a part of that change, a part of that," because I love doing community service. And I'm excited about the future. I chose to run with Mr. Merkulek here, because we probably come from the most opposite political backgrounds, but I have a great deal of respect for him, and I'm sure he does for me, and because he said it, we've said it to each other. And we chose to join forces, because I think we both bring, even though we may have divergent political viewpoints, bring a dedication to this town and the people in it.
Okay, Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Thank the League, and thank everybody in the audience. If elected to represent the good people of Hopewell Borough for the next three years, I promise that, unlike my opponent, I will attend 100%, not 50% of the regularly scheduled school board and school board standing committee meetings. I would appreciate your vote, position number two, on November 5th. Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, well, we're doing a good job. I think everybody has seen this here today. And I don't think there's any need to change a winning team in this respect. I think what I'm bringing to the table here is highly relevant. I am a teacher trainer, I am a curriculum developer, I'm a coursebook author, and I also run a P&amp;L across 36 countries with 250,000 students and 3,000 teachers. So, I think I know how to make sure that, since it is private education, that not only do we have high academic excellence, but that we also are able to balance a budget. I also think that through the wonders of technology, not only myself, but my other colleagues on the school board have managed to be extremely efficient, even if not attending all 100% of the meetings, because we have found a way to harness what the 21st century has to offer. And rather than talking, 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 we make results. So, let the record stand.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hopewell Valley League of Women Voters, excuse me, I want to thank the candidates for taking time from their busy schedules to participate in the forum today, Mr. Flagel and his students for taping the forum, and the two local cable stations, Channel 19 on Comcast and Channel 32 on Verizon, for broadcasting this forum. Broadcast will begin this Friday, October 18th, at 6:00 p.m. I want to remind the candidates and any viewers that no part of the recording of this forum may be used by any candidate for any purpose whatsoever. And finally, please remember that the election for the school board members is on Tuesday, November 5th, at the same time as the general election. The polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Information on the elections and voting can be found on the Hopewell Valley League of Women Voters website, as well as on the New Jersey League of Women Voters website and the New Jersey Elections website. Thank you.
Thank you. It's crazy.